I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is becoming quite usual, my report is going to be fairly short. Other than Town and Country Days, it's been a couple of quiet weeks for me since the last meeting. We do have this reminder that we have the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference coming up in Duluth. So our reports, I'm sure, will all be much longer at the next council meeting. And with that, I will pass it off to Councilmember LeBeau.
I had a park and tree meeting and a marathon codification zoning meeting. I think that's it.
Aren't they all marathon codification?
Well, this one was especially fun.
Oh, okay.
Also participated in that.
Couldn't leave.
Thank you, Councilor Hertzberg. Anything else?
No.
No, okay. Councilor Reiki.
We had a planning commission meeting last week and along with an E-DAP, so.
Okay, a couple of items from there coming to us tonight. Councilor Gilmore?
E-DAP and policies and procedures.
All right.
Oh, yeah, and that one.
We do have one department head report, and that would be our police chief, Paul Agner. Paul?
Thank you. So I've got quite a few different things to update you guys on. As most of you probably know, Officer Fred and K-9 Jerry have completed their training. He is now fully certified to complete all aspects of what he's been trained to do, so the narcotics apprehension, tracking, that sort of thing. I think he's been back for three weeks so far. He has been deployed three times. His first deployment was actually just outside of town on the bypass, on a traffic stop. That stop netted a loaded handgun, most likely being carried by individuals trafficking narcotics between Minnesota and the West Coast. The other one netted a small amount of stuff, and then the tracking ended up being more of a false report type situation, but that track actually was for a neighboring jurisdiction, Meeker County called, looking for that, so, you know, we were able to assist them in that. Officer Holkinson is heading into the final stages of his field training. He's got a couple more shifts in the third phase, and then he'll head into the fourth phase starting next week. So about two weeks out before he's on his own, doing solo patrol. Both Officer Lynch and Officer Meadows have reached their one-year anniversary with the department. Based on their performance, they've decided not to extend any probation or ask that their probation be extended. Both are continuing to grow as officers and doing well. The department's actually spent a lot of time recently doing some staff bonding. If anyone would like to come back and see the officer squadron, we spent a Sunday painting together in there in anticipation of the new furniture, which the staff actually wanted me to pass on their appreciation for you guys' support for the department and for providing them that stuff. The new furniture is in and actually looks really nice in the room, so hopefully that will make things a little easier for them. This Saturday, for anybody who's got absolutely nothing going on, I expect to see Pat there. We have our-
Can I get to bond with you guys?
You could, yes. We have our fourth annual Shop with the Cop, the 19-Night Golf Tournament. It starts at noon with registration. There's a light lunch provided and dinner with shotguns start at 1:00. By all indications, it looks like the tournament should be bigger this year than we've had any of the years past. So that's a positive thing. There's a lot of support for that program. Update on our part-timers. I want to say a huge thank you to both Steve and Bruce for coming back and helping us out while Tom is in training. Bruce has one shift left. His license will expire at the end of this month, and he is not renewing his license. So as of basically June 30th, Bruce will not be with the department anymore. Steve has another year before his license needs to renew. I'm still in negotiations with him to see what, you know, whether he would like to stay, and then we'll discuss maybe options with the council, looking at some potential for like him being kept for backgrounds and that sort of stuff. Town and Country Days went well. We had very few issues. Alcohol did start to show up on the school property at the carnival this year. We had talked to a few people about it, but for the most part, that was about the only issues we had. Weather was actually really, really nice this year, so. Speed zone, I just kind of want to let everybody know, on the east end of town, the speed zone has changed. Officers will be out enforcing it. We are using it as an education period right now. But that speed zone has gone from 50 by Senex, or 55 by Senex, and pushed out to Clare Avenue. I think you had an update on that in the last council. Those signs are now posted. So everybody be aware of those signs and make sure we're watching our speeds coming into town. We're in the process of working on our Night to Unite Community Picnic, which will be August 6th, down at Gazebo Park. So once we get past the golf tournament and everything else, then we'll start focusing on that event. Everyone is invited and encouraged to come and attend. It's a free meal. Opportunity to meet the fire department, police department, ambulance, and other city personnel that attend. And then lastly, just kind of an update on the secretary. Stephanie's been with us since the beginning of April. She's doing a great job. And I don't think there's been a day that she has not been busy. To date, she's spent almost, oh, by now, probably over 100 hours doing transcription work just in the couple of months she's been here, so, over a one full pay period of just strictly transcription work.
And that's it? That's it. Did you say August 6th is the Night to Unite?
Yeah, it should be the Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, yep. I wrote nine. I must be dyslexic or something, but I check my calendar. Six is a Tuesday. The alcohol at Town and Country Days with locals, carnival?
Was not carnival, not carnival. We did have a couple of issues with, you know, ended up arresting one of the carnival workers on some outstanding warrants, and then there was another gentleman who was having some issues running around town that we had to deal with, but for the most part. It was just people who decided to walk onto the property with some-
Okay, wasn't from the fire department dance that came over?
Was not, no.
Okay.
No, and actually-
On their own.
Those were, I believe, Thursday and Friday night.
Okay.
So by the time we hit Saturday, there wasn't much.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you very much. Then we have before us the consent agenda, the minutes from those five meetings on page one. The vouchers on page two totaling $483,541.9, section page two and three. The request to send the Schlepperization of the Route out to the 2018 wastewater operator training in August. And the DMT certification there, the request to send Officers Lynch and Holkinson to that in September, October.
I just had a question. I just wanted to clarify the cost of the wastewater training program. On the agenda, it says 350, but I think on this page here it says 390. Is there like an early registration discount or?
It's 390 on the required, on the-
390.
Tipo.
Is it just a typo? And then is that the exam fee is in addition to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll consider that a typo and move on?
All right, then I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Stereo. My dominatrix left, so I'll go with her. Any discussion? All favor I. Close, none, carried. All right, then the first item is bound to Fire Department, and they're looking at some potential budget increases.
Yes, at our last, your honors, at our last Fire Department meeting with the townships, they wanted to see an increase in the line items for the large equipment and building, and would rather see that than be hit with a large amount in the future. So they discussed about $10,000 to be added to that line item, and I wanted to bring it to your attention, since none of you will be here for that meeting. I had Belinda run what those numbers would be for each entity if that $10,000 was added to the budget. All other items on those line items stayed the same. The city of Painesville would go up about $12,000. We paid the largest percent into the Fire Department. The next largest is the township at 8,700. I believe it was Zion Township. It was either Zion or Union Grove that brought this up, which you can see it doesn't really affect that much compared to the city or the township of Painesville. So I just wanted to get any input that you had on this. We will do a roll call vote on this, so everybody only gets one vote each entity. But I know that the fire chief at Budget and Finance brought about a million dollars' worth of expenses that he has listed, and some of them we have on the top of this, in the top part of that page. So he, with the purchase of the truck, it has depleted a lot of money. And Belinda did put what the current balances are as of December 31st. They had $256,116 in their building reserve, $95,216 in their large equipment, which would be the tankers and pumpers, small equipment, they have $113,883.
No clarification, this is a, not a need list, a want list, correct?
Correct.
And so we did approve the purchase of the four-wheeler at our last meeting, correct?
Yep.
So the small equipment fund is going to come down approximately that $20,000?
That is correct.
And when this is brought to the Fire Department meeting on Wednesday evening, this basically is just a, it's not a binding vote, it's just an idea of what the townships or the other entities-
Are recommending.
Feel like or recommend that they come to the council for our budget for next year.
And Renee, I thought when they were adding that $10,000, they were just adding it for the one line, but they want to add it to all three lines? I thought at one time they were talking about for the truck fund, that they wanted to raise 10 grand on it a year, but I'm not sure if it's all three lines. You can clarify that on Wednesday night.
I'll clarify that, but that's what Belinda got from the minutes.
Okay, because I know they're worried more about the trucks because it's so much, they're so expensive. It'll come up, I'm sure.
We'll clarify it. I really don't know if it will, honestly. They just, they were very adamant about it. And that's why I wanted to make sure you guys seen that, but I will clarify that.
Any of those three funds could be knocked down significantly with not much for purchases here. If they're looking at the SCBA, that takes out pretty much that whole small equipment.
Yeah, and that, I own the SCBA for the 2021. I don't remember how old they are, but the bottles will have an expiration date on them? Ron, you remember what the expiration, was that 15 years?
I believe they're 15 years.
And the bottles have to be replaced, but the packs don't.
I think what they had said was that the new bottles aren't compatible with the old packs, and so they were going to have to replace both. I think that's what they had talked about at the-
They're at nine years right now, because they got a grant for them.
Right, we got the FEMA grant when we bought the whole thing, so then nine years, so there's got to be at least six years left on them.
Somewhere in there.
You can clarify that if you want, because if we can spread that $100,000 out for another six years, unless there's a major malfunction with those masks and packs, but.
The bottle should be 15 years.
I, I think.
I have to verify that.
Because of the fiberglass bottles are lighter from the steel ones we had before, I remember that.
Okay.
That'd be something, because then, like $100,000, we can save a couple more years for that, that'd be kind of nice.
Well, and they did reach out to Lisa Barleggio, that wrote the last grant, to see if there was funds to replace them. As long as it's been the-
Because we got those SCBs at the same time we got all of our gear. Now, we had 12 sets replaced after that big chemical spill.
Right.
So there still has to be another 12 to 14 sets of gear yet that will be the same age as those packs. Right?
Have to go back and look there.
And they're like $2,500 bucks a set, if I remember. Just a little impor-
Where'd they go?
Anxiously awaiting to hear what the townships have to say, and I shouldn't say just townships.
Because that $12,000 would affect our lobby. And township the same, so it sounds a bit extreme to me.
All right, no action required, any other discussion? Okay, then we'll move on to Ron Bergen, give us a verbal report on the Minnesota Department of Health Grant Agreement. The wellhead, Ron?
Okay, this is a source water protection grant in the amount of $10,000. As you can see, there's three items that we've targeted. We have the Water Festival, which we do every single year, and that's at $1,500. And a wellhead newsletter, which we do whenever we do get a grant. And then we will also install some permanent transducers and tie the depth in our wells to our SCADA system, so that can be read if we'd like to on a daily manner. Remember, last year we did go through and updated our wellhead protection plan, and these items are all identified in there, and I guess we would recommending approving the grant agreement.
May I make a motion to approve the Minnesota Department of Health Grant Agreement?
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to approve the Minnesota Department of Health Grant Agreement. Discussion, all favor I. Close, none, carried. All right, and the moment everybody in the audience has been waiting for. We have received a rezoning application from Pat Etelle. And this is in regards to, it's actually on our update here too, just an additional letter that came in. But this is for rezoning to allow the purchase of some property on the south side of the city, South Highway 55. Would need to be rezoned for this. It's currently our one, single and two family, and request to be changed to our two multifamily, correct?
That is correct.
To a three-story assisted living apartment building of 40 units. Planning Commission has gone through the motions here. They have discussed this, they have the hearing, and they're recommending that the request be granted.
With the contingency, your honor, with the contingency that they get access off-
Off Highway 55. A letter that was received after the, between the, when the Planning Commission had this was from Jerry Meyer, B-57 Flanders Drive, in opposition to the location, but not to the project.
Then I'll move to approve the Resolution 2019-25 regarding the request for rezoning.
Second. Motion by Reiki, seconded by Hertzberg to approve the, down on the other page. Approve Resolution 2019-25 regarding requests for rezoning, discussion?
Are we, um-
Just one question.
Ladies first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Len.
Go.
Is that, we have that contingency still about the access to 55?
Does that need to be part of the motion?
That's what I'm wondering.
It's my understanding that's essentially dealt with?
I guess that was my question. Where are we at on the access?
I have, this is Tom Olbets.
Tom?
We have a letter of understanding based upon all the approvals that might be necessary. Essentially has the same thing with Aaron Krantz. They have, Aaron has had trouble with piling snow in the winter. He's going to allow him to pile some of his snow on the land that he would own. And I've talked to Aaron too, and it's, we have an understanding, not like a contract. I would have to sign a contract if this were bad season, but it's, it has the same sort of friendly nature to it as what we have.
So there will be an access to 55? Okay, that was my same question.
And-
That'll be a straight right from the approach.
Yep.
That was part of the recommendation from-
You have a fire item?
Yep.
You have a fire item, it'll be right, it'll be right to the old piece. It's really short, it's measured, I can't remember, 80 feet or something like that.
But it's not in the resolution, so I mean, I think you should.
I think we should add it to make sure.
Is that a motion?
Is that really a motion?
No, to amend their motion.
To amend, to add that, to add the contingency to the resolutions.
We need to make a motion to add the contingency to the, what?
Yes.
Need to amend the original motion?
Amend the motion to add the contingency to the resolution.
Does the person who made the motion need to add it?
Anybody.
Okay, I'll make that motion too.
Okay. Second.
I'll second it.
All right, then we have a motion and a second to add the contingency to the resolution. Any discussion on that, contingency in regards to the article by the elders?
All I have to say is, Tom Olbets, thank you very much for coming into our city and second of a development.
We haven't asked you yet.
We're going to.
Any discussion on that? All favor I? Close, none, carried. Okay, then the motion to approve Resolution 2019-25 regarding request for rezoning with the contingency added in there. Any discussion on that? All favor I?
I.
Close, none, carried.
Can I say thank you?
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Your agenda looks fascinating, we're brutally in there.
We're almost done now.
I wish I could too.
Just reach out, Tom, when you're ready, and we'll get meetings set up and get it moving as fast as you like.
The only thing eliminated currently is-
What's that?
And we are down to item D. There's a change in the actual number that we will be reverse, reversed. The amount is $41,279.99, correct? That's the update in the moment?
Um, yes.
And-
Can I ask?
That money would go back into motor vehicle, where the expenses came out as other income. So it would show that for the auditors, that that money came in.
How close does that come to actually covering the expenses that we had?
Well, we're talking with Belinda today. Sean called and asked her the same question, and there's really no way to be able to know how many people left that couldn't get service or we were down for two days. If, we can give you a roundabout idea, because we did add staff for a while, but now that staff is gone. So I, we can give you-
We heard if you're going to over-tend this, and doing something.
Yeah, pretty much.
I would think.
Do you have that ballpark figure?
I don't, no. She didn't have it either.
No, when I talked to Belinda, we tried adding it up, and we got sort of some numbers, but essentially it just became what we can trace isn't much, and what we can speculate might be a lot, but it's just not worth the time or hassle, so take what we can and work forward with kind of Belinda's view.
Initially, the cities and our registrars were asked to submit numbers for reimbursement, but the state in its infinite wisdom finally decided to just pull some numbers out of the air and go with it. And the question is whether or not, you know, it's lost revenue, you know, people had to get their tabs or they're, you know, someplace. So where they went, you know, who knows, but it had to be done in someplace. So like what Sean said, it's nice to have.
I'm all for taking the money, so I motion to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign the grant agreement, and the deputy register to sign the liability release for the appropriation of $41,503.62 for deputy register reimbursement related to the development and deployment of the mineral system.
I'll second that.
He might have said, he might have said the old number.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend the appropriation amount to $41,275.99. Can't read that.
I think that's less.
It is less.
It is, it's like 200 bucks less.
Yeah, it's 200 bucks in the wind. Belinda and I jumped, we have to sign it now before it goes down again.
Yeah, they just got another sheet to us on Friday. They just keep screwing up, and they thought there was a resolution you were going to have to sign, but then they decided, no, you didn't, and those.
Yeah, I will, I will take the, unless the council disagrees, otherwise I will take the motion to be $41,275.99 as a, not a typo, but maybe a typo or something. So we do a motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to basically accept the $41,275.99 and authorize the signatures, as on page three of the update. Any other discussion? All favor I? Close, none, carried. Thank you. All business, Fire Department, then. This is coming from our last meeting, where there was a motion that was put forward and seconded to eliminate the collection of the $350 for vehicle fires and rescues, if I recall. So this is coming back to the council now, and since it was a motion to eliminate, we have to either vote that up or down. If it's voted up, we move on. If it's voted down, then we start over. And since there is a motion and a second, it's open for discussion. And did we find out any other information about, from the Fire Department about? I know they talked about trying to speed up that process.
No.
No? And it would be nowhere near the extra $10,000 a year that we're looking to put away for fines.
I still have a hard time with taking away money that they're supposed to be getting in for those things when they're already asking for a large increase in their budget, personally.
You know, if you take your cell phone and take a picture of the license plate, wouldn't that give us most of the information we need?
It's not like that. Who's the driver?
But it's the vehicle that burnt up.
Or the accident. Who's driving it? There's both things.
I thought this was just for lawyers. Thing of it is, it's not a big sharing thing. Depends who's out there. You can't get the information from, it's a pain, can it be done? Can it be done better? Yes, it can be done. Can the paperwork get to the city hall faster and better? Yes. The other question is, if- The other question is, if Belinda spends more than six, eight hours, we lost money. If we have to get Bill involved in it, we lost money.
Yeah, I think we weren't doing that. And there was a time when we were turning them over to collection, but it seems that that never goes anywhere.
No, yeah, we were sending them to Bullseye, but they never collected any.
No, they never, they never did. I mean, they're, they're only gonna collect it if somebody writes them a check. I mean, for three hundred and fifty bucks, they're not gonna sue it out. So it's just, does a collection agency writing a letter trigger a payment? If not, it's just dead. You know, 'cause they're, they're only gonna write so many letters and, um, but it wasn't worth having me to write letters. So we started doing that in hopes that it would do something, but I think the history has shown that it doesn't.
And we all receive a percentage of the three fifty anyway then.
Right. And if we, if it was done more timely, we probably would collect.
Maybe, yeah.
But...
But from the discussion a couple of weeks ago is that, you know, you don't know of the twenty-four members on the department who's gonna be there to start the process. Other things are going on. Uh, I can see where Alicia's coming from.
I kinda can too. I mean, we want more money for stuff, but we aren't willing to help. And like, right, in a year's time, maybe it's not even a thousand bucks, but...
Because I think... There can only be a couple a year, right?
Right, I think we said two or maybe three a year.
Yeah.
That got called out, so...
We budget for three a year.
I think if anybody was going to keep this, you better raise that three fifty up.
But probably should be raised to five hundred.
If you're gonna keep playing this game, we need to go up to five hundred dollars or something, so we have a little bit of a error. But I, I don't... There's so much stuff going on in the scene to get the insurance information, to get the license plate, get the, the VIN number on the car if you can, to get the driver of the vehicle, get all that written down. And then if you have all the information, you have to make sure it gets here because it's private information. If you miss one component, then Belinda's making phone calls for twelve hours trying to find it.
I guess from my perspective, I would just rather know that if our guys are going out there, they're worried about doing the job and not collecting paperwork and making sure that every little eye gets dotted, or else the city's out five hundred, seven hundred bucks, whatever we might raise it.
Renee, you think they can get better and do it better, or what's your, it's your ladies in the office doing it, and...
Well, originally, when we got the smartphone, that was why we got them a smartphone and not just a regular flip phone that was in their car. In the fire truck was, because they want, they said if they had a smartphone, they could take the pictures and send them right away. But that never developed. They said then, we can just take pictures of everything, we don't have to worry about paperwork, we can just go snap photos and we're done. And it would be much more efficient. And I said, we don't care how it's done, just so she can get it more timely.
How much do they pay for the smartphone every month?
The smartphone is sixty-five dollars a month.
Maybe we should take that away and...
Give them back a flip phone.
So is it something where the...
Offset the cost.
The Fire Department needs a sheet of paper that says this has to be done, blah, 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 give it to Andy, Andy, this is us. You have to make your men, guys out there, where it's ever doing it, have a class on it when they're one of their trainings, and do it. This is how it is.
I mean, I, it, I've never been on an emergency scene, so I don't, I agree that it's more important, the person in the vehicle is more important. But I don't, I don't know, if everybody, police is looking for that same information, why, why can it be shared, Paul?
Yeah, so traditionally, what I see is one of the guys in the Fire Department, usually towards the end, once patient care and everything else has been addressed, is standing there with a clipboard collecting information. So if we have the insurance card for our purposes, it's very easy for them to say, hey, can we, do you have the insurance card? And we can hand them the insurance card over, and they can take the information. I mean, um, I take photos of insurance cards all the time on accident scenes because it's so much easier for me to have that picture and go back and reference from my reports and anything else than it is trying to write everything down, you know, 'cause we wanna clear those scenes as quickly as possible, so, I mean, you know, it's a matter of asking for whoever's got the information at the time to get it. The, the one tough part we do end up, or that we can run into is in fire, in the case of fires or some accidents, we may or may not have access to those insurance cards, depending upon the nature of the crash or the fire. That stuff can either be destroyed or impossible to get to. But it's certainly something that, I mean, it should be an easy thing to snap a photo of, of that information, and even the driver's license, if it's accessible.
But I do agree that I would raise, if you decide you wanna keep it, to raise it to five hundred dollars, 'cause it's been three fifty since, well, as long as I've been here, since two thousand and six.
And if we're working on raising it to five hundred, then I'd like to see, uh, a procedure that's given to the Fire Department so they can train on it, they're training or talking about it in their meetings and say, step one, two, three, whatever, into line.
It says, it says here that this Matt Olferson is in charge.
Well, that's, that's for the sheets, the call sheets, although the phone's gonna be a little bit different. If there is a call like that, Andy needs to know who did it and have, and send it in the next day. Matt's the call sheets. The phone's gonna be a little bit different with the call sheet, but, uh, we need a procedure, boom, boom, boom. Show them, tell them what to do. If Matt's not around and John did it, whoever, Andy, you're the chief, send the information in, there's a couple clicks.
So can we send this to Policy and Procedures Committee?
Just a procedure, not like a procedure, how to do it.
What needs to be taken?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, would be more Fire Department policy rather than, you know, policy procedure, right?
Well, I'd probably have Belinda put together exactly what she needs. And laminate it, and then they could put it right in the reg.
Yep. That would be the easiest, simplest thing to do.
Yeah, then it's right there. They should know that at every scene, at a fire scene, vehicle fire scene, this is what we have to have for Belinda. I mean, they have her email right in the phone already set up.
Yeah, then it shouldn't be that hard, and then they can talk about it in a meeting for five minutes, and it's gonna be like a five-step process anyway.
I'm sensing what needs to be done here is the, uh, the motion needs to be voted down, and then this would go to, um, we'd have to amend our fee schedule, if that's what we wanna do.
Have to go to budget next.
I don't think it would have to go, if that's what the council intends to do, I don't think it has to go.
To raise it to five, well.
No, that'd be in the, that's the budget, that'd be in your fees.
Well, I'll make the motion to not approve, disapprove Resolution.
Well, we already have a motion to not approve, so we just...
We do?
Yeah. That was brought from the last meeting. The motion was to...
Not approve?
Was to, um...
I thought we tabled.
The motion was to eliminate the collection of the three hundred and fifty dollars. That was tabled and brought back to this meeting. We did not vote on that motion, we have to vote on that motion.
Okay, I vote no.
Is it a, is it a nay?
It would be a nay.
Okay.
Because the motion was to eliminate the collection of that three hundred and fifty dollar fees, and there was a motion to table that, but that did not kill that motion. What that did is just brought that motion back to this meeting.
Got it, I'm tracking now. Okay.
So you need a motion to approve the resolution, everybody vote negative?
No, we already have a motion.
So we need to vote on that motion?
It's the motion that was...
Good.
To eliminate the fee, so all in favor of eliminating the fee, the three hundred and fifty dollar collection fee for vehicle and fire rescues, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion fails four to one, and I'm sensing that the staff has direction here now to, um, look at, uh, put this in the fee schedule, three hundred and fifty dollars?
Sean said...
Because that'll have to come back. It would, it would be on the minutes from the last meeting.
June tenth minutes.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
I follow.
Yep. So that will come back to the council with the, uh, in the, um, fee schedule, the change, and...
That didn't include the five hundred?
No.
Increase.
No. That did not.
Do we need to make that motion?
The council chooses to, we can, we can change that fee schedule right now.
I'll make the motion that we increase it to five hundred, so it's worthwhile.
I'll second that.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to increase the collection fee for vehicle and fire rescues to five hundred dollars, discussion?
Just for the record, we've normally done those fee schedule changes by resolution.
Yeah.
Does that implicitly authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign a resolution accomplishing that? I mean, is that the intent, or do we wanna come back to the next meeting with the resolution? Or do, are we saying that they...
My sense is the intent is to raise that to five hundred dollars.
So we can prepare a resolution, the mayor and clerk can sign it in the, between now and the next meeting, and it'll be done?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna be sure we all understood.
It's good. Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One motion does carry, and the, uh... Belinda will write up something and pass that to the Fire Department to put into their procedures for calls.
Laminate it card to be taped to the back of the phone.
Yeah. That could be their screensaver.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Spend more time on that than on the zoning change.
We're still doing good.
Then coming back to this also, anything else on that? Okay. Then also coming back is the request for temporary street closing for the, uh, Saturday, August seventeenth, um, car show in Arts and Craft Fair downtown. And it looks like our suggestions that came out of our discussion were being accepted and put into change on the application, so it's basically just, uh, James Avenue from the, uh, both of the banks', um, drive-through accesses, and only Augusta from, uh, James up to the EMPI gate with the farmer's market to remain in that area, is that correct? And Washburn will remain open.
So Augusta to James will be open?
South, south of James will be open.
Yeah, right.
So people can get out of the alley coming from the west, out of the bank parking lot, they can get to Queen B's, but up to, at James is where the barricades will be. Clarice Mudd?
I'll do the motion to approve the temporary street closing application for a car show, Arts and Craft Fair on Saturday, August seventeenth, twenty nineteen, from seven AM to four PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve the temporary street closing application for a car show and Arts and Craft Fair on Saturday, August seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, from seven AM to four PM. The understanding is that was the new one that came back. Any just further discussion?
Just as a clerical procedural point, I thought we had a motion on this one that was tabled from our last meeting as well.
We will double check. I thought it was...
I know we had a lot of discussion.
I know we talked about it, I don't know if it was actually made into a motion.
I don't think so.
I thought, Neil, it was your motion. Could have been, I don't know, but it maybe died for another second too, I'm not sure. Though you were, uh, you were thinking of changing it without asking them, and they said no.
Yeah, I thought that was the motion with the second, and then we said no, we should send it back.
I don't know, I don't know, it could be great.
I don't either. We'll find out.
We will find out from the expert note, dear.
I know that we're never, ever gonna shut off Augusta Avenue to business, don't you think?
A motion was made by, uh, Neil, seconded by Lisa to James, to close James Street only. Not this Augusta from twenty...
Okay. You were correct, sir. I mean, not that I'm surprised.
I'm surprised as well.
Okay, so then we have to vote that one down, and then with the...
No.
No, that was the right.
Because it was only James, they are closing part of Augusta. That's the request.
And it was never passed, there was no action on the motion.
Yep.
There was a motion made, but we, we did not vote on that motion. A motion and seconded, but no action.
Okay, so we do need to complete that motion.
Yeah, so there was no, um, vote, and then we went right into a motion and seconded to table.
Okay.
And that did have a vote.
Okay. So there's another one we should probably vote no on if you want to accept the new diagram. All those in favor of the motion to only close James Street, signified by saying aye? Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion does fail, okay. So now we can have a motion to, and that was...
I'll restate my motion.
You're still willing to put that forward, and Alicia, you're still willing to second that?
Yeah.
Okay, so now it is close James from the two bank, um, drive-through accesses, entrances, or whatever, uh, and Augusta north of James. Will we clear as much on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That carries. Well, this is one of the more complex ones we've had for a long time. And it's only seven items.
Technical difficulties.
Yes. I should have been on this week.
Oh, it would have all been a mess when you come back.
Yes, okay. Last item of action in, or whatever here is the housing study. Uh, this was, uh, tabled from the June tenth meeting, and basically just sent to the EDEP for their review and recommendation. And Renee can fill us in what happened at the EDA meeting.
Uh, the EDA board, um, discussed the housing study, asked why we would want it done without having a benefit to the community, um, if there was a grant we were applying for or anything like that. I said at this time, no, it was to update it, so we had a current housing study to see what our housing needs are for any type of developer that comes in. Um, and they said that, um, they were not interested in having the study done at this time or paying for the study, and to bring it back at such time as there was a grant application or a reason to have the study done.
And basically what they were talking about was any major people that are gonna come in would do their own study anyway. And so they didn't feel it was a need.
What do we have left in the EDA budget for the year?
Uh, I can't answer that honestly. There was, there's three hundred, three hundred thousand in their reserve, in their, in their, in their account.
In their account.
Not in the revolving loan, but in their account.
In their account. And was it a unanimous vote at the EDA?
They took no action.
They took no action, oh, okay.
It was pretty unanimous.
Yeah, it would, yeah, they just didn't take a vote.
I mean, I feel like with as much as our housing market has changed in the last five years, that it, I, I still don't think it's a bad idea to update our housing study.
You work more with developers... You work more with developers than, than I do. Would you consider developers anxious to do their own study if they're looking to do something housing-wise, or would they want something they can pull off the shelf and take a look at?
We wouldn't have had the apartments in the community park if it wasn't for the two thousand and fourteen housing study. They, they would not have done their own.
You know what Opatz's timeline is on his development out there, when he expects to start moving people in? Just thinking it might make more sense if it's only six months or a year away to wait until that's done, it might change.
I would say probably next spring or summer, he'll be moving people in. I mean, cuz he's, he's gotta get a builder, get, I mean, I think he already has specs and a floor plan done, so that part will go quite quickly, but then you're gonna hit winter. So... I mean, I know he'd like to have it up and, and pull as soon as possible. But they would take that into consideration during the study.
How long would the study, would the Community Partners Research take to update our study?
They would start in August and be done, I think, in November.
Okay.
October, November.
Just trying to think out loud here about timelines, that if someone were to be looking at doing housing or something, starting in the construction season of next year, when they would want
Well, they said...
Access to housing studies?
They would be, starting September first and being done November thirty-first, so I would say that would be approved by council in December. They're gonna, if somebody was looking at coming here, that would be the time.
Did Opatz do his own study? It was my understanding he did.
He did for, on senior housing.
Yeah.
And the Center Care had done a study also.
On senior housing.
On senior housing, yeah.
On senior housing. But we are trying to market single-family and some multifamily, whatever, we're trying to market.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve a housing study to be conducted by Community Partners Research Incorporated in the amount of nine thousand five hundred to be paid for by E D A.
Even if they don't want to, we approve the motion, that's where it's gonna come from.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
You approve their budget to begin.
Well, I will second it, so we could, can vote it up or down here.
Part of me just doesn't like going against committees.
Pardon?
A part of me, we have these committees, when they make recommendations, I like to not go against them.
And you had a point there, because now we're going against them and taking their money out of their committee.
But that, that's what gives me a little heartburn, because, just like tonight, when the planning commission says, this is a good idea, these people are on these committees and do a lot of work, and I appreciate what they do, and normally go with their recommendations. Even if I did originally think it was a good idea.
Just, just for a little information, you overruled their decision in two thousand and fourteen also.
And I, you know, I, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this, because all of the seminars that I've been to on economic development, they talk about housing and developing market rate and somewhat affordable housing, so that you can fill the jobs that you have that, that are available. The legislature has taken action to, in, in some communities, provide some, some funding for that. They kind of short-sighted, they haven't gone far enough, but it's forcing communities, in order to compete, to act on your own, to develop the, you know, the housing for the, the jobs. There's some things in the works, kind of going behind the scenes, where we're gonna need a whole lot more housing than we have currently available right now, but...
Well, we all know if an investor built another Aldon, it would be successful. I can't believe that hasn't happened, but if the study would help push that, it's nine thousand dollars spent wisely.
Yep.
I mean, we already, just based on the welcome study that we did last year, know that there's some, there's, there is a housing shortage, but to what extent that is, you know, it would be nice to know for sure, so that we could be a little more proactive in trying to find developers that wanna build here in our community.
And it would, and Stearns County H R A is looking at getting more into the, the small cities grants, and we can always apply for another one if we have the study done. We can, we can work with them to, to get another grant, and hopefully get another million dollars to help rehab some homes.
That'd be great.
And would, you know, and I don't know if something like this would make a difference, but I mean, I think people are all kind of waiting to see when, when that Fertchi land will, when something will happen up there. And I don't know if getting a study like this done might get him to, to move on, starting something. Maybe it won't, but, but I don't think it would hurt. I think that's something that, you know, everybody is waiting to see happen, and how it'll go. It would be nice, nice to encourage that if we could.
Quite nice, in my mind, to have, you know, in your economic development toolbox, something like that, that you can pull off the shelf and show to someone right away that's not five or six years old, that's, you know, current and, and updated. And it's the city's money, it's not the E D A money.
Renee, if we were to say no to this, and some developer came in and said, well, I might be interested, but I'd like to see your housing study, how quickly could we get going on this again, if we knew we had interest and that it would actually give us some benefit at that time?
I talked to, I started talking to them in May, so, and they're saying that they could start September first, so...
Like a four-month negotiation and prep period?
Yeah, if they're not, it just depends on their schedule.
It's also kind of hard to say, like, there was a decent change in cost, and it's hard to say whether that nine thousand five hundred would go back up at some future date as well.
Any other words of wisdom or questions? And we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? One opposed, motion does carry. All right, thank you for interesting and stimulating discussion. We have then our informational, which is the West Central Sanitation Report, forty-nine, the Police Department Report, page fifty, the meeting schedules are ready for July and August, notice of the Stearns County Conditional Use Public Hearing Notice on page fifty-six. Yeah. My page thing doesn't work. And that is tonight at six PM, so if you hurry, you can still be late. And then the notice from the Highway Twenty-three Coalition there, two members and, and backers as to an open house that was held, and some of the projects that they are looking at doing ahead. And that, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.